Alright. Everybody log in? Okay, anyone else want to order, Mrs. Senator, will you call your own please?
Mr. Cackill?
Here.
Mr. Giambrani?
I'm here.
Mr. Madison?
I'm also there.
Mr. Paulson?
I'm here too.
Mrs. Swanson?
Here.
Mr. Roman?
Here.
Mrs. Inteher?
Here, Mrs. Moran, let us in the pledge, please. First time on the agenda since we were communicating with old school, so Mrs. Moran again.
Thank you. Good evening, I am Danielle Moran, Principal here at Hawthorne School, and I'd like to welcome all of our guests tonight, as well as Dr. Schuler, the leadership team, and our school board members. The Hawthorne community is very excited to be hosting the board meeting. We have several parents, community members, and staff members here who greatly appreciate their attendance. I would especially like to thank our PTA and parent volunteers for providing refreshments tonight. This is just my second year as Principal here at Hawthorne, and tonight I'd like to share with you some of the amazing things the students, staff, and community have taught me and have accomplished. As you know, Hawthorne School is a diverse community rooted in great pride and tradition. Our students are eager to come to school every day with a curiosity for learning and a positive energy that is contagious. Our staff is a dedicated staff who care deeply for the individual needs of all of our students. They have high expectations for learning and take pride in our students' achievement. We are focused this year on collaborative practices, research-based instructional strategies, and differentiation. Our families and the surrounding community are supportive, working cooperatively together, building a strong home and school connection. Our PTA, with the leadership of our President, Ms. Kara Murphy, have provided many fun and educational opportunities for our students, including many new clubs run entirely with the support of volunteers and donations during our students' lunch hour this year. I'm thankful to be part of this diverse and welcoming community, and I thank you for the opportunity to serve the families of Hawthorne School. Tonight we have a short video that several Hawthorne students designed with the help of our LLC Director, Ms. Ashley Young. It highlights the passion and hard work of our students, staff, and community, and it's composed entirely by Hawthorne students using iPads and an iPhone. I hope you enjoy it, and I thank you for coming tonight.
We would like to welcome our school board new Superintendent, Dr. Schuler. Hawthorne is known at the Lille School with a big heart, and there are so many reasons to love Hawthorne. Here at the captain reasons it is great to be at Hawthorne. We have friends and teacher staff open at Hawthorne. There are fun and educational clubs in the grounds. We have a lot of different varieties of beaches that teachers show just in front of the classroom. At the school, we sing songs, and my favorite song is "Never". We are passionate about books and work to cast our adventure series. A strong and involved community and a hardworking and supportive PTA. Teachers are using technology to teach in innovative ways. Our amazing Hawthorne team won third place in the Battle for Books competition. Our students come from many cultures and speak many different languages. I thought when we learn more and more every year. The staff and students at Hawthorne School are excited to work with the school board and our new superintendent this year. We know that together we can unleash new academic heights.
Thank you, I just wanted to highlight one of the top 10 reasons, and there's CLUT Club, and that stands for Children Learning English Fluency. And we have two staff members here tonight, Mrs. Schuber and Ms. Theodore. They actually wrote a grant to start this new music program for students who aren't learning English in grades K through 3. So it's very exciting, it's our second year having this program, we're very proud to offer that here. Another highlight of the video that I'm very proud of is our World Relief Homework Club. And we actually have over 50 refugee students that have signed up for the club, and almost 35 volunteers. We partnered with World Relief and Wheaton College to provide volunteers, and kids can come after school and do research-based, computer-based interventions. We're training our volunteers, and they get help with their homework every week, Thursday nights here at Hawthorne, and then Monday nights over in the apartments where they live. So we're very excited to offer that. Thank you again for coming tonight, have a good night.
Thank you, Mrs. Moran, and thank you Hawthorne staff and students for that wonderful presentation. And thank you, we are very proud that you've gone ahead and taken the initiative for that grant. You know, there's so much our students learn through music, and to hear that kid go through for our English language learners is paramount to their success long-term, so thank you for doing that, taking that on. At this point in time, I know you're all busy, and if you would like to stay, you're more than welcome, and listen to our exciting meeting. But if you haven't eaten, you would like to feel free to get up and leave and attend to your other meetings tonight. Thank you so much for being here, and we're more than welcome. Okay, next item of business, modifications to the agenda, modifications to the agenda that board members wish to make. Very done, we move on. We're on public comments on agenda items. Here we have two people signed up. The opportunity to speak to the board is provided for members to the public who have a question or comment on agenda items. The board appreciates hearing from you and values your thoughts and your questions. The board strives to make the best decisions through district and public input in a variety of venues is very helpful. The board must protect the civility and decorum of this meeting, so please be respectful for the duties of the board and the democratic process in your comments tonight. Please use the microphone, state your name and address, and address your comments to the board. Please limit your comments to three minutes, be factual and courteous, and do not include statements that are personally disrespectful or condescending to members of the board or staff. If you feel your matter needs to be discussed more in detail, please attend the board's chair to jet or present your comments to us immediately. First person who signed up for a public comment is Mary Ann Matone.
Good evening, my name is Mary Ann Matone. Under FOIA and Open Meetings Act, I do not have to give you my address, that is personal information, so I will withhold it. You do know I am a taxpayer here in District 200. You can ask, but speakers do not have to give that information. Regarding SB 16 and the ineffective resolution posted on the agenda that was done in collaboration with the IASB, which is a lobbying group for the union, and District 204, I would ask the board to not support this resolution in its current format, what I read, due to the fact that this resolution solves nothing. It doesn't address the so-called revenue problem. The fact of the matter is, there is no revenue or funding problem. Our local school boards and state have a spending problem. Eighty percent of school budgets go to salaries and benefits. We cannot tax or feed our way out of this mess we're in. The reality is, these salaries and benefits need to be brought in line with the private sector. Eighty percent of your budget is where the problem is, that's where the cuts need to come from. The resolution doesn't talk about school boards' rating and spending. It doesn't mention the real problem we have here in Illinois, and that is the pension. The pension crisis, and they mention nothing about pension reform. We do not need education funding reform, we need pension reform. Some recent articles that have been in the news, one from Taxpayers United of America, I have a copy here. Eight hundred and thirty-six DuPage County government teacher pensions are in the top 6.6% national income level, Dr. Catalani being number one on the list. This is where our tax money's spent, that's not going to the children, that's going into somebody's pocket. Last year District 200 spent $400,000 on picking up the 9.4% pension contributions for employees that should be paying it themselves. Another $100,000 on healthcare benefits for employees that are paying nothing, or only 10% of their 20% contribution. Taxpayers paid $588,786 on 6% salary spike raises last year for those under retirement pool. Again, that money has been going on year after year, it's not for the children, it's going into somebody's pocket. And let's not forget the $40,000 we waived for Dr. Harris when he broke the contract he had with this district. No wonder we have a revenue problem. I'd like to quote someone from one other article. This is talking about the Chicago pensions that are three times worse than 10 years ago. Jeffrey Brown, Professor of Finance at University of Illinois-Champaign. Here's what he quoted saying, "It's pretty clear what the issue is. When you make bigger promises than you can possibly expect to keep, there's going to be a shortage." Brown says state officials have kicked the can down the road over and over, and they're running out of time. It's a tough sell politically, but that doesn't change reality. The math here is simple, and the pension shortfall is severe, because we've ignored that math and opted out of making hard choices for years. Well, that day of reckoning is coming upon us very quickly. This resolution is a tax-to-the-max bill, dipping into taxpayers' pocket once again. And you know what, I find it pretty disheartening to use children to get money for something that's you're gaining the system. So I would ask you not support this and find some real solutions to the problem. Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Tom, I see you've signed up to talk about district goals, and that's actually not an agenda item. However, if it suits the board for you to, I mean, that's on a future agenda, that'll be on next, two weeks from now, and then again in November. But if the board so wishes you to speak now in May, otherwise you can wait until after. It's fine if you want to come now, but if I can see your body in the fence, so come out.
I would like to comment on academic performance in your 1310 champion Forrest Court. I would like to comment on academic performance in district goals as it relates to our high schools and ACT scores. After 10 years of helping to administer a Read ACT test to students, I believe that ACT is a very good measurable for comparing performance of students in schools that should be part of our district goals, if that information will still be available. It's too bad that the start at Park may muddy the waters. As a side note, I have philosophical difference with the criticism of teaching to the test, whether it's ACT, Park, or AP testing. Am I against too much test insurance? At the date of the last committee of the whole, there was actually some context available for comparing our 2014 ACT scores. As reported, our ACT composite increased .2. Other surrounding suburban schools had composite increases of anywhere from .2 to 1.2, while Bonzi was 1.2 and Caylin was 1.1. The general suburban trend was up. At that last meeting, a board member asked if subgroups could be a factor in evaluating our ACT performance, i.e. are there significant differences between subgroups? My analysis, which does not really differ from ACT's own analysis, shows a dramatic difference between demographic subgroups, which should be used to measure performance and refine district goals. Although many demographics are certainly related to each other, one demographic subgroup vector is actually more strongly correlated to composite ACT than even low-income, using 2011-2013 ACT data. You can see from the graph, this is my PowerPoint, that 34 high schools have a very strong linear relationship with this ethnicity demographic. The correlation is a strong .92, which actually got stronger from 2011 to 2013. This devil is more significant than low-income, which has a correlation of .85. I should also mention that these student demographics had a much higher correlation to ACT scores than teacher demographics, like average salary or years of experience. Although not one of the 34 high schools in this data, Waukegan High School, which district has recently been in the news for union issues, fits the trend on this graph, although it would not have for low-income. Our two high schools trend right where we should be based on student demographics. My thinking is that it is almost impossible to measure a high school's performance and create goals without evaluating these subgroups and comparing them with a sufficient range of benchmark schools or districts. The board needs this deeper dive to set meaningful goals for positive progress and allocate scarce resources. Please note that I am not saying that certain demographics automatically leave no hope of achieving higher student or district goals. You only have to look at several CPS select schools that blow the socks off suburban ACT scores, including ours, with all subgroups scoring higher than comparables, including low-income. Thank you.
Thank you, that concludes the public comment. Next, we have our consent agenda. I'm sorry. Second meeting, I forgot about children. We have a superintendent's report, Dr. Schuler, thank you.
Thank you. Just a couple of things that I wanted to share with the board tonight under my report. The first is that last Friday, a day while our students were enjoying the sunshine off of school, I wanted to share with you a little bit about what some of the teachers were working on on that institute day. In the morning, we had teachers participating in building-based activities such as training in Google Classroom and social-emotional learning best practices. We had some teachers that were students for the morning and completed a reading activity from the student's perspective, with the purpose being to gain a full understanding of several Common Core standards as applied to reading. In the afternoon, that PLC work continued, with elementary-level teachers participating in an online training coordinated by the district's curriculum department. Activities in the online training were designed to improve writing instruction. At the middle and high school levels, teachers participated in demonstrations on best practices for integrating technology in the classroom. Yesterday, at our monthly administrators' meeting, we asked our principals to report out on what teachers were saying, and a couple of the quotes that we heard was, "It was the best institute day in a long time." So kudos to Faith and her team, and really all of our principals that helped to plan what is a meaningful day. And again, just important to highlight it, because I think sometimes there's question about what does happen on those days when students are not in school, and it's very important professional development work for us. Also wanted to share a fun tidbit that today was National Walk or Bike to School Day. The goal of the day is to encourage students and families to build healthy habits through exercise and also understand the impact that automobiles can have on the environment. It was really a fun way for a number of our schools to rally around a good cause and get students excited about how they get to school. Many of our schools did participate, and a number of pictures up on our Facebook page if you're interested in seeing some of the bike and walk to school activities. We do have later on our agenda the Senate Bill 16 discussion, but I do just want to make a quick public reminder that there is an Impact Forum tomorrow evening, being held at Wheaton Orndale South High School at 7:00. You're welcome to come to the Impact Forum. If you get a chance, you can slide out to the Wheaton North-South volleyball game. Things happening about the same time, so get there early, parking will be, I'm sure, at a premium. And then also, I just wanted to thank board members and everybody who participated in the transition open house, Dr. Panopoulos and your staff, please thank them, it was really a wonderful opportunity to introduce to the public a facility that is much better aligned in serving the needs of our 18 to 22-year-old students. And then finally, because I reported on it in the first meeting, I have successfully gotten to 20 of the 21 school buildings as part of the visit, spent about a half a day in each of them, and just want to make one quick public comment to say there are some really, really exciting and amazing things happening in our classrooms. It's really been a pleasure to spend time early in the first month out in schools and really get a context for the good things that are happening, for which you support and have a great responsibility. So thank you for that.
Thank you, Dr. Schuler. There are questions for Dr. Schuler, we'll go ahead and move along with the consent agenda. We have six items on the consent agenda. Acceptance of a grant to Johnson Elementary School. Approval of revised Board Policy 7.20 Bullying, Intimidation, and Harassment Forbidden. Approval to post a 2015-2016 district calendar for public review and comment. Approval of bills payable and payroll. Approval of minutes September 10, 2014, open and closed. September 24th Committee of the Whole, open and closed. September 24th, 2014, special meeting. And approval to destroy recordings of closed sessions prior to May 2013. Approval of personnel report to include employment, resignation, retirement, and the invasions of a ministry certified classified unemployment means down. Are there any items members wish to have included in the consent agenda? Okay, then we'll entertain the motion in a second to approve the consent agenda as presented. So?
Who, Mr. Roman?
Second.
Second amendment, Mrs. Swanson, is there any discussion?
I have one request on the posted policy. I can play lawyer if Mr. Roman lets me. One little edit, one little edit to the sexual harassment prohibited paragraph. There's a word, there's a phrase in the second full paragraph that says harassment includes the following. I would like to add, but it's not limited to. Yeah, it was picked up in one of the other paragraphs, but in the second full paragraph, second one.
One other thing I wanted to note, I noted that as part of feedback that was received, the word hazing was inserted in a number of different places. Should that also be included in the title? Was it bullying, intimidation, hazing, and harassment?
I believe it is included in the title of the policy, it's just not included correctly in the title, as it's on the agenda, but in the revised policy it is there. It's the original policy posted, but it's revised.
Are there any other questions or suggestions? Can we go ahead and approve with a modification that Mr. Paulson suggested?
I just wanted to say thank you for the staff, I've been working on massaging this policy a little bit. You know, this is an example of a policy that sometimes drives me nuts, where the state of Illinois came in and, good intention, I mean, the substance of the policy is good, but they mandate that we have a policy and that we develop it locally, and then they proceed to tell us 42 specific things that the policy has to say, and how it has to say. And it just, you know, drives you a little nuts when you're not allowed to make those kinds of decisions. And so one of the things that it did do was to take out hazing, which was in our original policy, and it was good in my opinion for the staff to put it back in, although the elements of hazing certainly are covered by all of the activities that outline in the proposed policy. And I think it's always a good thing to name that activity for what it is, so that nobody is confused about whether or not we condone that sort of thing. So thank you very much.
Just a thank you to, and I think we should mention, which certain board members have always been doing, but to the announced donator at Johnson, to purchase two 10-packs of iPad Minis is like over $5,500, it's a huge donation, and I'm sure the kids have got them, it was like Christmas. So very exciting, and I'm sure they'll use them. My 21-year-old grandson is using a Mini iPad. I mean, it is definitely the thing, it's going to help him, it just makes it more fun, too. So thank you to that family.
Thank you. Any other comments? Are you ready? Do we need to amend a motion to include Mr. Paulson's?
The motion is amended.
Yes, amended, okay, okay, great. Call for a call? Hawthorne.
Mr. Roman?
Yes.
Mrs. Swanson?
Yes.
Mr. Madison?
Yes.
Mrs. Cackill?
Yes.
Mr. Giambrani?
Yes.
Mr. Paulson?
Yes.
Mrs. Inteher?
Yes. Is the consent agenda approved?
I'm sorry.
There are several action items on the agenda, the first of which is approval of a collective bargaining agreement with the Classified Employees Association for 2014-2017. There are motion to approve this bargaining agreement. So?
Who, Mr. Paulson?
Paulson.
Second, Mr. Roman, discussion.
Do you want me to first let Dr. Do you want me to first let Dr. Rammer just give an update on that agreement and set a context for any discussion for the board?
Thank you, Dr. Schuler. But you did like, commend the representatives of the CEA for their conscientious and collaborative and cooperative work on this bargain. I think we would say collectively, it was a well-thought-out and very thoughtful process. We met seven times since the end of last year in that bargaining session. And I think it creates a settlement that is good for not only the employees of the district, but certainly for the district itself. I would certainly suggest that they have come to the table with the best interest of the district, that these employees are hardworking and contribute a great deal to the success that we're getting in the district, and I think this collective bargaining represents their conscientiousness as we come to the settlement.
Dr. Schuler, any comments?
No. Mr. Rammer, do you want to just go ahead and give a couple of highlights from the contract that's in the release that's coming out, this contract?
The settlement is a three-year bargain covering the years 2014 and 15, 2015, 16, and 2016, 17. Settlement for year one is a 1.5 salary percent increase with the elimination of the traditional salary schedule that is historically tied to automatic increases based on years of experience. Given the economics of the association, and the district realized that the traditional salary schedule is pretty much obsolete, and this schedule provides a much more candid and upfront representation for staff in terms of their salary increases. In addition to that salary increase, we will provide a post-employment opportunity, a post-employment compensation for people who work in the district as a representation of their service in the district for 15 years or longer. In years two and three of the collective bargaining agreement, salaries are tied to the CPI, which is another provision that economically, based on the revenue the district gets from the CPI, totally ties the salary to that. The base and cap on those second and third years are, you know, less than 1.5% and no more than 3%. And we do understand that the CPI range can vary from 0 to 5%. This is a respective mid-range to keep these employees, their salary, in line with the cost of living.
Thank you, Robert. You want to just make a quick mention as well of the market adjustment in year one?
Well, there is, we did do some market adjustment for some positions that were, had some variations from the comparable. There were several positions within the association whose salary was just not comparable with other positions in some of the districts. So, outside of the settlement, if you would, as part of that, we adjusted some salaries to make those comparable to our benchmark districts, which is separate from the 1.5 salary, the CPI salary adjustment. So, those were, that we worked on collectively to say, there's some positions that with the elimination of the salary schedule, it simply wouldn't be fair to leave them in that salary link, so we did some adjustment to that to put those in the right spots to vary them forward. And we will continue the association to look at those positions, and some of those are positions that are difficult to find, some of our nursing positions are difficult to find, and OTs, VTs, and those characteristics that need some salary adjustments. We'll work with those consistently over the next three years to make sure that without the salary schedule, we treat these people fairly.
I have one question. Could you describe who the employees are that are covered by this, and what percentage of the staff this represents?
Good question, Dr. Robinson. These are our certified employees, and they are aides, secretaries, custodians, that work alongside our staff and with all our staff in the district. A little over 500 employees in that population.
Dr. Rammer, as you know, we have a five-year financial plan presented to aspire to financial advances. Does this proposed collective bargaining fall within the parameters of that protection, protected five-year plan?
Yes, Dr.
One rampant question. I think the board in closed session met about three or four times on this topic. We set some parameters, which Dr. Rammer vehemently represented us in, and we achieved within those parameters, I believe, and, you know, it sounds like the staff is also inclined to accept them. Thank you for your effort.
And also, thank the Classified Staff for their contribution.
Well, I'm going to be a little bit redundant here, but I did want to thank our staff who worked to put this bargain together, Dr. Rammer and Mr. Farley, the super-tended shoulders. I thank them very much. But I also want to thank the certified staff. They really, I have found them, and I think we've all found them, to be very progressive when it comes to meeting the needs of their membership within realities of what our resources are. And they are a tremendous help to us in this regard, but more importantly, what they do for our district and our students every day are key. And it's safe to say we wouldn't have a smoothly functioning district without employees of that level. So, I do want to just recognize their contributions on a day-to-day basis, as well as their contribution to making this bargain be a successful one. So, thank you.
Any other comments? I also want to say from the entire board, thank you to everybody who worked on this, Dr. Rammer, Dr. Schuler, Mr. Farley, Penny, and Pat, and all of your members who helped you through this. And I know it's always tough to do a negotiation like this because, you know, trying to help the other people you represent, and you have their best interests at heart, and, you know, and we have only as much money as we have to help out and to pay people their value. And we're hoping that this contract really is, especially with the adjustments that we made, is a statement that we value the employees in the classified association. We appreciate all you do for us, and we know very well that we wouldn't run smoothly without you and the people you represent. So, thank you very much, and if everybody's okay with it, I think it may be time to take a moment.
Mr. Swanson?
Yes.
Mr. Bronn?
Yes.
Mr. Madison?
Yes.
Mr. Giambrani?
Yes.
Mrs. Swanson?
Yes.
Mrs. Cackill?
Yes.
Mrs. Intihar?
Yes. Motion carries. Thank you very much. By the way, that was the final action item. I know we have a lot of discussion items tonight, and I kind of said we have a lot of action items, but that's it. Okay. First discussion items, guys. Our first discussion item is IASB resolutions. Copy of the resolutions were divided into board members' operating folders on September 25th in the whole. And so, before what we've had in the past is, you know, trying to go through things that, items that we cannot, or don't feel is appropriate for us to support the recommendations of the Resolutions Committee and IASB. And then in our upcoming vote, appoint the delegate and vote actually on the resolutions, and then have that delegate take our wishes to the Assembly. So, if we were to discuss some of these things, I think we could go through and see what we'd like to do, who would like to keep this on.
I would just say that I don't think any specific that I would like to propose as a resolution, so taking me off the list.
So, just to clarify, just for the people at home, there's not a little bit of confusion here, but later on, we're going to be talking about a resolution, Senate Bill 16, which was referred to as being done in conjunction with IASB, and I'm quite sure that's exactly the case. But what we're talking about now is a totally different thing. And these are resolutions for our association that our association membership votes on annually, and then adding position statements that are adopted on a basis for legislative activity on the part of our association for the following reason. So, we in September was received a copy of the resolutions that have already been submitted. We don't have to think of any ones yet at this point. So, it's just a matter of, yeah, right, right, right. So, it's just a matter of looking to see how the Resolution Committee has recommended on each of these, and if we have disagreement with the Resolution Committee, as Mrs. Intihar said, that's what we need to note. And so, with that as a preface, I actually did look through all of the resolutions, and I, for the first time, did not find that I thought were recommended or not recommended that we should, you want to go opposite of. So, that's my opinion. I'd be interested if staff has looked at it and has anything on them, but they seemed sensible to me.
Any comments?
I'd like to look at all the resolution, pending proposed resolutions, and I have no objection to any of them. But I do have a question, and just wanted to bring it to the board's attention, with respect to a current resolution that's proposed to be, it appears plus, in respect to the District 204 resolution as well. It's on page 1415, Division State 2.36, school violence reform. So, this format, this resolution already exists, it's been approved, and proposing amendment, and I have no objection to amendment, but I wasn't around when the original resolution was adopted. I just want to point out that the original, virtual resolution divides that the IASB takes the position that, in essence, pocket tax payments that we properly, when we discuss the levy, should be in public, it should be limited, that's in the existing resolution. And there's no proposal by the IASB to address that specific issue, amendment to this resolution to, you know, to conduct a program that has no relationship to that specific project. This resolution exists, it exists, I think, since 2003, or since 2008, so we had no position under the last six years with respect to the resolution. But that's what the resolution calls for, is that part of the 204 resolution, probably the next. So, I just wanted to point out, I have no competition at all with proposing amendment to make sense, to propose amendment to the resolution, I have so much objection. If I'm making myself clear, I'm not against it.
So, would you be ready on that time? The team's there?
Exactly. It becomes time for us to consider what resolutions we might not propose, and we might not propose some amendments to this particular resolution.
Just to clarify, this is the same process last year where we did a couple of resolutions?
Yes.
Charter schools that had some level of success?
Yes.
I actually have, we'll kind of do our own. I actually have a little bit of equivalent with new resolution number one, like page ten. And I understand the, I think, I understand the logic behind it, and I understand the Resolution Committee recommending adapting it. But I'm concerned about the IASB trying to convince the legislature that they should put cost controls on anything. And it's just a philosophical kind of, I'm not sure that cost controls, what it talks about for the general public is the increasing cost of student transportation. It's suggested that the IASB support limiting costs that transportation companies can charge for all special education students. While I think that's a worthy cause to try to keep costs under control, I'm not sure that doing that by a law versus, you know, the public marketplace is a good idea. I can see companies saying, well, I'm going to bid on your regular transportation cost, but I'm not interested in bidding on your special ed cost. I can kind of see that happening, I'm a special ed business. And I think, you know, it's a delicate population that we need to make sure, you know, in times we had issues with kids being bussed down and forth, we've had some issues that have been fairly substantial with special education bussing, because it takes a special kind of person, it takes a special kind of mentality, it takes special care. So, to say that we should put cost controls on that, I'm afraid that's going to do us more harm than we want. So, that's my objection to number one. That really is the only objection that I get. I'm happy to listen to anybody's briefing, but I, and I think it's our job to protect our students, and I'm not sure that that's, while it's always good to save money, is that the right way, to save money on that and protect our students. I don't necessarily see that happening.
So, special ed, is transportation required by pretty much every school district that is providing themselves? So, I guess the intent of my question would be that the market, competitive bid market would establish the world's most expensive.
It generally does. You have a little bit of authority though when it comes to special transportation. So, it's generally bidding contract, but you have a little bit more authority to, I think, deal with some in the digital circumstances.
And my thing is, should we let the bid process control what we pay, or should we expect the state legislature to tell these people how much they can charge? And then, I'm just concerned that they may opt to just, well, I'm not going to touch that business, I'm not going to bid on your business.
No, I guess my question would support your position, rather than telling companies how much they can, maximum, and I'm sure that that could somehow, somehow that changes every year by the competitive bid market, or the school district negotiating. Seems to be an equally appropriate way to control costs.
I, you know what, I thought about that, when I read, I thought about that. But here's, here's the deal for me. And actually, I'd be interested to hear what, you know, our staff has to say about it, Mr. Farley has to say about it, because he, you know, obviously has to do it at the same time, right? I guess my thinking is, you know, the state of Illinois has cut our transportation costs way down. They gotta do something to give us a relief. I mean, I would be all for, I, but if they're going to constrain us on one end, it seems appropriate to ask for some relief on another end. That, that's my opinion. So, that's kind of why I thought, you know what, maybe not my ideal solution, but on the other hand, we're kind of starting to get into a box. So, that's why I thought.
I would be happy to have our staff look into that. I will tell you with the resolutions, I did not ask our SLT staff to review all of these. Candidly, if there's one you want us to take a more careful look at, if that one being included, I'd be happy to do that and come back and report for the next meeting. I'd be happy to do that and come back and report to the next meeting.
I totally agree with what you're saying. I had concerns about it earlier today. But the only reason I said it was my as, as unit here, I'll go along with it, particularly since I thought, if there's going to be any area of solution to occur on competitive bids to the union's areas of special ed, because it is so arcane in ways, like the costs. If the state could adopt some provisions to make sure that the bid on special ed transportation truly is competitive, perhaps that's part of the bill, but we need something from the state to make sure that the spending costs are equalized so that the school districts can have some account for what they did. It's truly competitive, good perspective, special ed.
And Mike, yeah, but what we did was the reasoning of the, I mean, did that sway your thinking at all? You know, they put the...
Yeah, no, when I just, it's for us to express this, I think, it's pretty, pretty bearable with respect to the justification for asking for some sort of state control over the special education transportation costs. But because all school districts are being hamstrung by the documents and transportation funding created by the state, the school district would have no answer to the rule on the equal and destructive front for arguing transportation and special education.
The rationale stated is, you know, there have been drastic cuts in transportation, and reimbursement of transportation costs, and any effort to limit and equalize costs so that a school district transportation budgeting challenges. So, basically, it's a very pragmatic rationale, which I understand. I mean, from a pragmatic point of view, I don't have any issue with this resolution. My issue is more looking down the road. If something like this does get enacted, then what happens when we can't find anybody to take our students from your home to our schools in the middle of the way? That's, you know, I mean, I'm all for the limited quest today, but I'm worried about the long-term implications.
I would say in purpose in this discussion, again, just to remember to put this into context, this is simply a position stated by our association, which they used to kind of guide their legislative activity. And we heard from our legislators recently that apparently enacting legislation, just to get the conversation started, is a, is a, is a method of methodology in their mind. So, my feeling is this is not, you know, necessarily going to result in any sort of legislation, but it certainly does start talking about that our transportation costs are not being adequately met by the state of Illinois, and that there are additional costs beyond that that they're, you know, that are impacting the districts. And the process of, as you know, you've done this, Mrs. Zentare, and you have to pull this resolution on the consent agenda, you've got to rally the rest of the assembly to say we don't agree with it. So, my feeling would be, unless Mr. Farley and Dr. Schuler said, "You know what? We're thinking about it, and we are just so worried about if this would ever go forward. Let us know in November," and I'm sure we'd all agree with it, but, and, and, and both are that kind of thing. But if it seems reasonable to you, I think it's one of these things that maybe you don't normally to worry about too much, out of mind, but in terms of the session.
I mean, I agree with premise of what you're saying. It's not a big potato kind of item. On the other hand, I worry about little things that end up setting precedents for bigger things. And that's, that's kind of where I'm at with it. And I understand, you know, why it seems like it's a good thing. I just, this is setting a precedent for then the IASB to be looked upon as a line before price controls. You know, which I don't think, you know, is necessarily what we want as the IASB to do yet. But I would like that the staff would kind of give us their opinion on it, and then we'll take our vote at the next meeting and pick our nominee and decide, you know, from them what we want to do this particular one. I agree. It's kind of a little thing to kind of fall on your sword for. But if no one else is willing and deciding want to do it, I'll always be kind of, you know, I'm happy to take that, or I just, I just think we need a little bit more time to think about the habit to set it along. Especially since three of us, you know, large three of us, we're agreeing with it.
You know, I think if there's a message I'd like to convey, you know, again, this is the way I could probably do it. But, you know, we're the fiftieth state in funding in the United States. I mean, you know, we're talking about the cost of transportation. I mean, let's look at the big picture here. And, you know, this, I think some of these resolutions really missed the bulk. We're, we're underfunded in education. Let's start there. You know, this, this activity to me is such a triviality of getting the process accomplished. I, you know, maybe it's for discussion or whatever, but, I mean, someday we got to tackle this problem. You know, hopefully, we will, you know, start dealing with some of those challenges versus this approach to it. You know, telling us that we're underfunded in transportation, therefore, we're going to now limit every vendor that is going to, you know, what they're, yeah, you know, it just doesn't make sense. Let's try and get the ball up at the right level. And, you know, that's really, and, you know, we're talking about Senate Bill sixteen, and our, our association can't take the position at times because some districts it hurts and some it helps. So, I think we have to do what we can locally to try and achieve some of these objectives. If you're talking to our legislators, such as tomorrow night, and so on, to really try and get something accomplished to, to really address the fundamental problem in the state of Illinois. And that's really, you know, when I talk about some of these, I just start narrowing over because it's such, you know, it's not part of the real problem.
And let me just say, I, I agree with you as to what the real problem is, and the association is on that, they are on that. But by the same token, there are literally a hundred, over a hundred and some bills that are introduced every year that have the potential to impact us with these all kinds of small potato sort of things. And that's why our association needs direction as these things come at them. Because otherwise, you know, dollar here, dollar there, and you're talking about big bucks, as they say. And that's what the reason is for this whole process. So, while any one of these things, you're right, doesn't, doesn't get to the big problem, it certainly helps during the course of the year as they're watching out for all of these small things that come at us that further corrode, or mandates that put extra costs on us. If, if they don't know which way our association wants to go on those things, then they, they can't really get. And that's, that's all that this is there for. So, but, but the big picture problem, they're on that. This is for the day-to-day legislative activity that they encounter during the year.
Okay, so if there's no further discussion, we can move on to Senate Bill sixteen. It sounds like that's where we ought to be anyway. And if that's okay with everybody, we'll move on to talk about that. All right, who wants to kick that off? Dr. Schuler?
Yeah, let me just start by, I just wanted to again mention a couple of things going on currently revolving around Senate Bill sixteen, and then maybe just set a little bit of a foundation for discussion tonight. As I mentioned during, during my report, there is an impact forum being held tomorrow overnight that we, we mourn Bill South at seven o'clock. Couple of invited guests that will be at that forum that will include a number of our, our local legislators that's being sponsored by Representative Vibes and Senator Conley. Dr. Chris Cook, the state superintendent, and Robert Wolfe, who is the CFO for the state board will be there to just provide a factual context for what actually is included in Senate Bill sixteen. And then Representative Vibes has got a short presentation, just, I think outlining, you know, some of her thoughts around Senate Bill sixteen. And then, kind of on the local level, they've asked for, for, for me, for our local district to kind of close out the presentation part, and then they're going to open it up with an opportunity for some feedback and some questions. Following that, we've also planned in the district, two additional evenings that we're going to be sharing some information tomorrow night about. That may Wednesday, October the twenty ninth, we're going to host a session at Monroe Middle School. Thursday, November the thirteenth, we're going to host a session at Hubble Middle School. And really, I think our thought, we wanted to see one, what comes out of tomorrow night's impact forum. We also spent some time with PTA Council today, with a few other groups, getting some feedback around the questions that are being asked, so that we can really guide the focus of that evening and our thought in the forums. And what we're going to host is, we don't want to spend all the time talking that. Certainly, our community members, residents, but really model a lot of that dialogue that took place to be engaged to under process and, and sharing some information, but also hearing some feedback as to what people are asking about. So, I guess kind of the three questions I thought about for tonight, and then maybe other thoughts on your mind. I want to just make sure, number one, if there are any questions from the board about what actually is in Senate Bill sixteen, or any, any clarifications that it would help you, we want to try to provide those tonight. I guess the second thing for tonight is, is beyond, you know, what we've planned out in terms of some face-to-face discussion, are we missing anything in terms of our efforts to communicate and engage our public in that? And then, really, kind of the third question that, that I had for tonight is, does the board want to do some type of resolution? And again, I just want to clarify based on what's, this isn't an action item tonight, so we have not suggested that resolution for action, but us, you know, putting that in there, that was shared by a local school district that is looking to pass a resolution. So, I think the question from our board, for the board, is, are you interested in doing something like that to take beneficial position on Senate Bill sixteen, so?
I have a couple of questions, they kind of will be off. We have an operating revenue budget of what number? What is our revenue number total? Operations, approximately?
Hundred, hundred fifty-five million.
Hundred fifty-five million dollars. And Senate Bill sixteen is what, the monies that we receive under the state aid are included in that hundred and fifty-five million?
In order, yes.
Of that hundred fifty-five million, what is our proposed reduction that we may experience based on the best estimates of, of that? Approximately, how much is the reduction?
Just by ten million dollars.
Ten million dollars. So, for four years, but on a, you know, over a cycle of time, that's what, about seven percent maybe? You know, give or take. So, we're, what we're hearing from this bill is that if we, if this is enacted, community unit school district will lose seven percent of its revenue. Is that a fair statement? It might be cycled over four years, whatever. So, the impact to the district is tremendous. Okay, and we basically spend eighty percent of our, seventy, eighty percent of our dollars in compensation, mostly to staff. So, if that all were true, with no other sources of revenue, we would have to reduce conceptually our staff or our salaries, you know, eight million dollars, ten million dollars. And that, putting that in terms of numbers of teachers as a percentage of the number of teachers we have, what would that be?
About a hundred and thirty or just...
Hundred and thirty teachers out of how many?
A thousand, fifteen or...
So, almost thirteen percent of our staff, is that a fair number? That's a quick, quick math. So, we would potentially have to reduce our staff as much as thirteen percent if this legislation were enacted and we had no other source of revenue that would offset this effect. That's impactful to the school district. I don't know that that's what we sometimes talk about, Senate Bill sixteen and what it means. You know, that's real-world stuff, what we just talked about. So, we're looking at basically ten, thirteen percent of, potentially thirteen percent of our staff, which seven percent of our operating revenues would be, would be lost if this thing were enacted as proposed. Is that a fair statement, something like that?
If I may, going to the third point of Dr. Schuler. This joint, this resolution that we received of District 204, I guess with that in mind. This was sent to me by Justin Robles, who's a member of the District 204 Board. I met Justin last year at the IASB. He, on behalf of 204, one of the board members from 203 along with myself, proposed the resolution as tendered to the IASB, trying to learn the influence of common core standards to be implemented. And I'm learning where he spoke up on behalf of 204, taking the same position I was going to do on behalf of 200 and more than from 203, so we met. Then, we didn't see each other until three weeks ago at legislature practice when we were there. And so, he was drafting the resolution, opposing of Senate Bill sixteen, and signed, presented to the District 204 Board, and I'd like to see it, I'm sure it's sent to me. And this is what he said. To me, I guess it's being considered by other school districts in the state, namely the offensive school district. This resolution by and large incorporates wording of the IASB resolution I mentioned before about trying to adjust school funding to make it more equitable throughout the state and all the way. And it has the benefit of being proposed to Senate Bill sixteen, coming up with some alternatives to try to address the inequity that exists in state funding of education, which applies to state districts throughout the state. And it identifies considerations that should be addressed by the general, the, the administration here before trying to make some adjustments to the school funding formula that may not have been considered by the office of Senate Bill sixteen. So, opposing Senate Bill sixteen, but then takes the position that recognizes there is some inequity in state funding of school districts and education that needs to be adjusted. There's some aspects of the icon troubling, I mentioned before, that one of the elements of the IASB resolution that's appropriate to this resolution proposes the property tax cap that we all operate on. And I don't know whether the areas for to take a position, an opposition that may be. I know that it's a sensitive issue, and we all be aware of it. I did ask Justin in his follow-up on details of this, because I have eight presentations. What was it that Justin, he responded, said it did, it does, so, and that's what it does. So, just be conscious of that, and there's some wording in here that's kind of that big. It says, "Distributing state funds to local school districts. The size of school districts is important, and to the extent that district provides appropriate education." I asked him what size that means, so both population and geog, geog, and that shows. So, there's some ambiguity as well in this resolution. And that, contrary to the public comment, the theory, I think, the same proposal for us literally to adopt this as a one resolution is something for us to consider. I've done some, I've read it, I've talked to Justin about it. I have some hesitations and reservations about this specific resolution. And whether we want to, as a board, to adopt a resolution with respect to Senate Bill sixteen is a open question, but that's the background. No one, as far as none of us, is encouraging us to adopt this specific resolution at all. So, I want to make that clear, particularly why the public comment that you see is very clear.
I have one kind of follow-up, just wanted to finish that topic. I want to kind of follow up on James' comments. All right, so, I guess my request may be for tomorrow night, is sometimes when you put these big numbers in front of the community, they don't understand the impact on them. It's, you know, nine million is alarming, seven percent of our revenue is alarming. But if you look at a hundred thirty-five, I'm kind of looking back here at the professionals. Hundred thirty-five teachers divided by twenty schools is roughly six to seven teachers per school. If you look at an elementary school, that's almost a teacher per grade. So, if you have four sections of school, healthy, they'll take twenty-five kids, put them in a different place. So, theoretically, you could have five-size school, twenty-five and thirty-two, or something, thirty-one or more. Does that impact us in terms of age we have to provide, capacity of classroom furniture? Does that impact us in terms of age we have to provide, capacity of classroom furniture, to go from that additional class size? Maybe that's maybe something, potentially, maybe that question's maybe proposing for tomorrow night, specifics of the data, but there's definitely, people would understand that if you tell them class sizes are going to level up, theoretically, pay for twenty-five to thirty-two kids, that's a bunch more tangible, understandable impact on the parent.
And I can tell you, just even modeling a few things out, there's not a model through which you could likely address the need to cut all of the staff just through class size increase. So we need to actually run a few of those models out just to ultimately start to put a more personalized context to it than just, you know, a hundred and thirty staff members, and you couldn't do it. So, you know, that, again, what it would mean in terms of where that money would come from, I mean, cuts would take a whole lot more conversation than obviously would tonight, Brad, but it's fair to say that that would certainly create some space issues, that would certainly create, you know, some, you know, some other issues that would likely have to drive cuts at that level to even things beyond just class sizes over thirty-two.
So it's a very complicated calculation.
Kind of complicated calculation, it's a complicated answer. In terms of, you know, there's not going to be one simple, powerful cut that's going to reach that kind of, when you're talking...
You know, when you're, when you're talking about seven percent, you know, more of a budget, those are the cuts, those are very deep cuts.
We're kind of going in this back as we started with point three and point two. So I have a question about what's actually in Senate Bill 16 when it comes to this phasing in over four-year period thing. What does that really mean? I mean, do you have an idea what they're thinking in terms of that?
Yeah, the last I saw on that, Bill, correct me if you hear anything different, is phased in over four years with like a twenty-five percent each year. So it would take four years to get to the full redistribution of that.
But then after that point, it would be, the same ten million would be off our budget. It's not like it's, we're taking four years to just carve out ten million, we're working our way up to reducing our total budget. And I think maybe that's an important point, because people always say, oh, based in over four years, and then, well, that's not too bad, but it stays with us.
Is Wheaton, why is, maybe, is Wheaton Warren though a classic, are Wheaton higher than the normal, is DuPage County higher than the normal? And it's so, why is that happening? What's causing that to happen? You know, is, I guess that's my question.
Wheaton's going to hire them the normal in terms of the impact of this?
Yes. In other words, there's some formula that reduces various districts, some other districts get some, and I guess what is the model of a district that is getting hit as hard as we are and are we on the higher or lower scale of that?
So we are on the, I think we're on the higher end in terms of the impact, certainly when you just look at aggregate dollars lost, we are clearly on the higher end. What I can tell you on that, though, is that I can't fully comprehend or understand why it is that District 200 is impacted in the way that it is. And I would tell you, not just, I have talked to some folks that have done a lot more financial analysis into this, trying to understand that. I think the formula, sure, attempts to look at the, your value of local wealth, so how much, you know, how much locally AV do you have that's producing, you know, tax dollars? And then is combining needs of experience, you know, in terms of the population that you're educating, putting all those pieces into a formula saying, here's ultimately what you need. When you look at just a couple of examples locally, we don't spend beyond the state average. If you look at our spending, our spending is actually right at the state average. If you look at the demographic of the student population that we serve, we are certainly serving a population that would not be classified necessarily on the lower end in terms of the diversity of the population or the needs of the population of which we're serving. So I don't know candidly why 200 is impacted in the way that it is, and I certainly had some, some folks that spent a lot more time in this even than I have, that have said, I can't understand that. It doesn't seem to make a whole lot of sense. And I think classically, you would think of the districts truly with a lot of high local wealth should be impacted in this way, but when you look at 200, you look at 204, I think it's a, there's an anomaly in that formula that's really impacting us significantly, I think, beyond the norm.
Do we, who's, where are we getting this number from then? Is there some guidance that's been sent to us by the state that's telling us that this ten million dollar that we're referring to is the number we will be impacted by, but we don't know the details of the calculation, is that what we're kind of hearing?
Yes, Illinois State Board of Education is the one providing the information and is, Reeves Lakes Area Construction is a subject, we're going to try and dig into it. You mentioned locally what's going on. Every, every school is, DuPage County is scheduled to lose money, say, one. That's West Chicago Elementary, who's a, I think a two million dollar winner, but then you look at West Chicago High School, and they're a loser by two million dollars. So the devil of the details is really what's, a lot of people are, we're trying to figure out, and it doesn't make a lot of sense. You know, it's a district, I mean, we, the students relatively low compared to others, so it's, you know, I mean, you start looking at some of those factors as well, and as Dr. Schuler mentioned, our spend for students right there on the state average, so it's not like we're spending nineteen thousand dollars a year on, for a student or anything like that, and something that's probably just compared to the state average, so, you know, it's perplexing.
I used to get a pay that this number came from somewhere, some calculation that we were able to perform or replicate, that somehow this came from the State Board of Education with no background, with that, no, like, here's how we found out, you're going to lose this much money. I find that...
Amazing.
Yeah.
I think, I was actually looking at this spreadsheet today for my work, and it's like a hundred columns, there's no way anybody could figure it out how it's calculated, but to clarify Jones' question, where the number five in the state for the most lost? So you have Chicago, Palatine, Schaumburg, and Prairie 204 nonetheless. Eight hundred and sixty. Well, there's something, adjustments in there.
Although Chicago, Chicago also, yeah, all this information was shared with the representative senators and senators, let those legislative breakfasts that was hosted by the three districts two weeks ago. And Brad pointed out, we are the fourth, fifth, largest district, I mean, we are the fifth district in the most money on the rating scale, 204 is second, until 203, so that's why the three that were hosted the legislative breakfast. The calculations was shared with all the state representatives and senators, sort of the interesting point is where this is, the top of the, except perfectly in the top of the, but Rora doesn't seem to be the House Congresswoman, so she's not a modest committee that won't be passed in the House, so there's some concern, but what can be happened, you know, the blood sample, so there is the concern, and we made it clear to everyone, all the state representatives in this area, so this cannot, that's, this current form, it's got to, you can't allow this to happen.
I guess the question, the issue I'm trying to raise here is that we've had some emails from our, our community saying they don't know enough about this, they're hearing it for the first time. We had, I had the opportunity to talk to Representative DeBives, and these programs she's been putting on now are a direct result of people submitting emails to her office objecting to what's going on here. You know, we're a board of seven people that we can talk all we want, but we're not going to get a gigantic result here independently. We need, you know, everyone in the community, everyone in DuPage County really, needs to get on this band, not bandwagon, you know, save education to DuPage County Board, because it's, this is really, really impactful. And, you know, I, anybody that would ever say to us, you know, I hope we get some press on this, but, you know, anyone that says, I haven't heard of this before, please listen loud and listen clear, because you've got the opportunity to go to these sessions tomorrow. You know, this is the impact that we're talking about tonight, and it will devastate what we try, what we try to provide to education in this community. It's just, it'll be, you know, so impacting, it, you know, it'll lower the standard, I believe, that, that we can provide based on the cost that will be remotely ability to operate, so, please, everybody join the party.
In that regard, I'd like to applaud Erica and Dr. Schuler for how, period of their peril, on this decision two weeks ago, that set forth the argument against it very closely and very persuasively towards on, because they didn't last that long after our district three weeks ago or four weeks ago, and on this kind of process, and I know that we've gotten some emails from, we presented, we hadn't heard anything from us about it, we've been out there for the ten, well, legislative breakfast, but I want to endorse that Jim Atkinson said that the community needs to be supportive of this and participate and communicate extensively with our representative senators about the episode that it's made out of, look at our district operations.
And I'd agree with that, and I guess I would ask, what is your advice in terms of a communication plan, both for our constituents in our community, but also to the legislators? You know, when those of us who attend to get breakfast, I think we got a very strong impression that the legislators were not pleased to be getting negative feedback. Surprise, surprise. But, but, but they weren't, they kind of assimilated, were making a mountain out of a bull nail, and there's nothing to worry about, is kind of what they said. And, but yet they cast legislation in the bottom of the House. Based upon putting all those pieces together, do you have some advice for us as to how to proceed when it comes to things like resolutions, when it comes to things like organizing our community? What would you suggest?
Yeah, so I guess a couple of things, as we, as we're looking to the forums that we're going to host even beyond tomorrow night, one of the things that Erica and Bill have been working on is kind of a takeaway for those. So I think you're going to reach a certain number of people face-to-face, you're going to reach a certain number of people through electronic means, but what really is going to carry this message forward is giving people something that they feel compelled to take out and share with four other people. So if we're really going to get to the community, we're not going to meet face-to-face with everybody, we've got to give those that we get to or can get to a compelling message that they feel the need to continue to pass on, and I think that's, that's how it's going to get out. The one thing I guess I would say in terms of contact to the legislators is that contacting them and saying, vote no, is good, but contacting them and being very clear about what you have a concern about, that being mainly the fact that, one, Senate Bill 16, I think, in its composition is really confusing, and, two, it just doesn't deal with adequacy of the state. You know, it attempts to address equity, and there have not been good solutions over time to states that have attempted to address equity without also dealing with the adequacy argument at the, at the same time. And I think even in, you know, talking with Senator Conde a little bit about this, you know, one of the things that he's mentioned is that even if this current version of SB16 never gets called, something will come behind it. A new version of this will come behind it, and so I think this is the time for us to continue to carry forward that message, saying, if you're going to fix funding, you know, here's, yeah, here's how it needs to be fixed. And so I think, you know, that's really the message we've continued to try to deliver to people is, don't, you know, you know, we can't just jump up and down and say, no, don't do this to, you know, to us, I mean, I think that's a powerful message, but, you know, here's the solution. And that, the last thing I mentioned, I think your point was a, was a good one, the document that we're trying to develop and take away has really been done around the idea of trying to give people talking points, talking points they can resonate with that help them understand, you know, number one, why this is bad for us, but why this doesn't make sense truly when you look at, you know, the circumstances of the district.
One follow-up thing, we keep referring to the legislative session and the statement one senator, I don't know the representative, I don't know which was, that made a statement acting like this won't be an act, that it's been going, I've had the opportunity, some of my staff has been at another district around here that had a similar forum with different legislators, and they're acting like this is a certainty. So please don't give any impression to anyone that this is not going to happen, because I, you know, I think we're going to, you know, we might get surprised, so, you know, let's not even bring that kind of mindset into play, because it has some real big impact. You know, just to put this one more time in perspective, we get about ten million, what, how much do we get in general state aid?
Six and a half million in general, the general state aid in total.
We get now. So this ten million is taken out of where, other than general state aid?
They've, they've taken special transportation, if that included in the mix of this calculation, they take about twelve million total of state funding out of the seventeen million, which includes most line items, the general state aid formula, the poverty formula within the general state aid, and then almost the categorical payments, with the exception, I believe, special ed trans and one of the special ed tuition, tuition orphanage land, I believe, so, and driver's license may not be in it as well, but it's, of the seventeen and a half million received, twelve million is where they're pulling that calculation, and of that twelve million, we're losing ten million.
So in summary, then, we maybe get about seven million from the state to run all the categorical programs, special ed components that they imposed on us out of our hundred fifty million dollar budget. So the balance is a little bit of federal money, and the rest comes to local property debt. Is that a fair statement?
The only thing I'm going to comment on, as I read this proposed resolution from 204, is in their summary opposition statement, I'm quite intrigued by, because they address three things unrelated to finance. They say this is unconstitutional, and if that's the case, then who knows where this thing's going to go? I mean, there's people fighting pension reform because it's unconstitutional, but their comment, their summary opposition, once again, it does not satisfy the Illinois Constitution, number one. Number two, beliefs and position statements of the Illinois Association of School Boards, and third, principles of the state, the Illinois State Board of Education. So while they went through this lengthy analyses and all these bullet points, in fact, the matter is, their summary opposition is basically that it's unconstitutional. So I don't know what kind of message that sends or what impact that has, because it's truly unconstitutional, it's not within the Constitution, there's going to be a long fight and a battle relative to this reform, one would think, anyway.
Has anybody come up with an idea that we can't skip behind, that could resolve this, this...
You know, it's a time ago, the answer to that, there was this EFA, right, it was, I can't remember, was education, funding, advisory, I'm thinking, and I thought they came up with some recommendations, but then, yeah, it was like, it was like one of those committees that was put together by the legislature, and then the legislature decided to ignore the recommendations of the committee. That's my view, I mean, that's a jaded, obviously jaded view, but in my, I see Bill shaking his head, isn't that sort of what happened? They put together a team to put together recommendations, they came out with recommendations, and the legislature said, oh, we got all your recommendations. and the legislature said, "Oh, we don't have your recommendations."
No, uh, you want to detail on this? I'm, I'm not so sure that the, the legislature said, you know, "Watch your recommendations." I think they looked at the number and said, "You don't have the money to, to do it." So, you know, I, and I think, yeah, that's a piece to remember out of, of all of this, is that, um, EFA said that number, the Education Funding Advisory Board, said an adequacy number that is several thousand dollars beyond what's in the current foundation level, and the current foundation level is not being funded at 100%. So the actual current foundation level is, is realistically is below the 6119 that it is supposed to be. So if you look at where we're currently funding education compared to what, what the Education Funding Advisory Board said is an adequate education in Illinois, that gap is even more significant.
And, and do we know, and I, I'm somewhat of a rhetorical question, but do we know how or on what basis the, um, this bill redistributes education funds such that, I mean, what is the, what is the key item that one needs to have in a district to be a winner as a result of SB 16? Like, that's one thing, because I, I struggle internally saying that, um, you know, that the, our kids deserve to have more money for their education than some students in other districts in Illinois, because I think, I think there's some, you know, there's a part of me that says all kids should have their education funded appropriately. Now, I understand why we might need more money in educating students because of where we live, you know, our, all of, our costs are, are higher because we're in a higher cost, uh, of living area, maybe than a downstate area. But what is the, what is the rationale that this, that this bill used to determine equity? Does anybody have the answer to that question? I have, I have not heard that come out. Because what I would like to see us do in our opposition to this is not only say, "We're opposed because it hurts us," but we're also opposed because it doesn't really help the situation, or, or, I mean, just, I, I would like to have a clear understanding of that so that I can, and I think, and Dr. Ramner, and his replies out to us to the community kind of lead to that same thing. I think we need to kind of figure out, you know, what is it about this bill that's so awful, despite the fact that it impacts us so heavily? And I think that might be another way to get the community up for us, and, and another way to, to make our argument, um, more listened to. You want to add anything?
Again, I can't, I can't explain the calculation of the, the redistribution, but, but what I can tell you, I think it's short of the variables, it, it's local wealth. I mean, resource, what, what resources do you have relative to the population that you're certain? So, I, I, I mean, I think the, the quick answer to it is that the less resources you have locally, the more likely you are to become a local winner for the formula. But, you know, the, the one thing it does not have, which I think is another important point, is there is no regional adjustment for cost of living in this. And so, you know, that is an important factor in an educational system where, you know, a, a large chunk of your money are going to support staff, and of course, the cost of supporting staff do have a regional impact. There's nothing that accounts for, you know, any, any regional impact, and that's kind of pretty, I think, why they identified as an issue out of this. If you really are gonna say, you know, and that's kind of an issue across the state, to say, you know, uh, one standard cost of educating a student really probably's gotta have some level of regional adjustment as well.
Do you know, this, this is kind of going with Mrs. Inti's line thinking, the districts that gain more money from this, does it bring them up to, let's say, the fat number of the middle class per student? Because otherwise, it sort of works the same way, or doesn't work in the same way that vouchers don't work, that you're giving money but not the relevant money to help the people who theoretically would need to use that voucher. And I'm just wondering if that can be able to bear, or if anyone looks at it, or would you stretch your frame?
Because, you know, the analogy I used in the legislative breakfast is, you know, addressing equity before addressing adequacy is like rearranging deck chairs on a tig tasm. And the problem with this rearrangement, the way I see it, is all the deck chairs are gonna be pushed to one side, and the boat's gonna go down faster. And that's the question is, why it's so terrible is because it's going to have the effect of bringing education down everywhere to some extent, without the gas boiling up others enough. I don't know if that's accurate, but that's my question.
Yeah, I don't, um, I don't know if you, you know, what the, what, what the charts that I've seen of the modeling I've seen out of the state board indicate how much, so it, it's indicated how many dollars in aggregate school districts get out of this, and what that boils down to in terms of an impact, positive or negative, for student. Uh, I, I don't, I don't know what, what that brings some of them to in terms of foundation level, the winners, call any of the numbers in terms of the impact.
There's a net change per student amount that's, that's out there. Um, the EFA recommendation for FY14, I think, was 86.27, which would require 4.5 billion additional state funding, which is why they don't fund the January, I think in January they're supposed to come out with the FY15 number, but, yeah, there's a, uh, there is a swing in, in amount that's provided for student per district, and, you know, plus or minus, uh, which are currently getting, it's a capital.
So are we saying that this is all about taking the pot of money and just shuffling it around, not taking away or adding to this current distribution? And then we just look forward to, um, you know, less, maybe less than that, with the whole, uh, protection thing, and, 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 and.
We're, we're for, we're for a lot of them. Mr. Pass the mic, sir.
I would say it's unfortunate, I've spent so much time on this topic and not working out things to improve our district.
Well, I agree with you, but I think, uh, we need to make sure that our resources are well represented when it comes to our legislature, and, uh, I think we're in a good place. Uh, so if I can kind of summarize your, uh...
You have a name, or...
Sure.
Just like, the people that are for this and they wrote it are from the districts of the bed, right?
No, Senator, Senator from Downstate Illinois, this is our, our, this, this was sponsored in the Senate, as, you know, mostly designed to help downstate districts who are, have local property tax values, uh, operating deficit financing, um, you know, there is a real challenge in those districts, yeah, and we have our challenges, but they don't know, a lot of districts downstate are facing that.
What if they're positive, I mean, you suggest that you would lay into it, since he didn't put that in there?
And the other issue that, that I have, and I know this is a dirty word to downstateers anyway, is consolidation. I don't know if consolidation would help relieve some of the issues that, that a lot of our downstate communities have in terms of, of expenditures. You know, because there is the expenditure side, and we talked about the revenue side, but there is the expenditure side, so, so maybe on down the road, maybe a compromise bill would be to look at, you know, how we can be more efficient in some of the areas where we need the most funding versus, you know, and, and take that all into account in conjunction with, uh, improving the adequacy of the funding as well as the distribution of the funding. And I think it's a bigger problem than just taking up a pie and carving it. I think, I think there's so many other laws, in my view, in the state of Illinois, that impact, uh, the way schools, uh, have to spend money, that, that unless some of those laws change as well, this problem will never get resolved. I mean, I, I just see that, uh, even the time you talked about consolidation, and why consolidation can save you money in certain cases and give question money in other cases. Consolidation should always have some benefits of economies of scale that should help you save money, but because the laws aren't what they are, it's not always the case, and it's just because the laws maybe need to be changed surrounding the whole funding. And that's, to me, it's a, it's a bigger picture than just, let's just look at, you know, taking the same pie, or you could do the bigger pie even, and carving it out. There are issues that need to be addressed, and recommendations that have to come out that involve maybe structure as well as, so, so that's spoken in our piece.
I, I just wanted to put my stake in ground in terms of the resolution, which is how this whole thing got onto the table anyways. I, you know, if we, if you would advise us that it is good to go forward with some sort of re- resolution that's helpful as a tool, this particular one is not appealing to me, uh, for a number of reasons. I think one, Mr. Gianni referred to it, I think it's, and, and Mr. Madison, much better to have a resolution that gets to the main point. You know, there's, you're not addressing adequacy, it, it really violates the Constitution and the principles of a couple of, uh, you know, associations that we belong to. And lastly, the other thing that bothers me about this is transparency. You know, we have to operate under transparency, and, well, one of the problems with this is nobody knows how this bill is being formed, and how it's being, uh, created and evaluated, or how it will be brought forward, or if it will be brought forward, and how in the world can citizens have input into how their test money gets spent if they don't know how, how that suit is being made more or less? And that, to me, is a big problem here, and ought to be a part of any resolution essentially. We want to address equity and adequacy, but we need to be part of the conversation, or at least be able to listen to your conversation, so.
I think you make some excellent points, and, um, so it, so I, I guess what I'm hearing then is we do want, is there consensus among the board that we should, at least propose some sort of resolution, whether it be the one, uh, you know, that we have from the Southern District, or whether it be, uh, something that we craft?
I don't think so. Charles, I, I don't think we can, I personally would not, my doctor, move a favor of the resolution. So if we're wanting to do a resolution, it is something we thought, or incorporated from, you know, the source that we found, left the, 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 everyone, and then it's all forced, I think.
And, and yet, from my point of view, only spend the time doing it if, if it's gonna be used. You know, I mean, we, we've talked here about, you know, our concerns, hopefully we're gonna communicate to the community their concerns. If there's a reason why a formal resolution is helpful, or if there's something that everybody is getting on a bandwagon, that the momentum helps, that's good, but otherwise, I don't see spending a lot of staff time and work time just to come up with words that may not mean anything to a lot. And I like words.
I like words, but I like few words, so I like, I like having a resolution that's very succinct, and actually follows the points that you just stated, because I think you stated a lot of state in there, a few words, and, and that's what I like, it's, it's, I mean, I, I don't know, I'd like to know, you know, uh, what staff thinks about helping us to enter a resolution, although I'm sure we have certain board members who would be able to sit down and volunteer, uh, to do that. I just don't know, again, uh, you know, uh, how, how will we determine whether or not we give it some worthwhile activity?
Maybe, a, a resolution that you adopt is not necessarily going further than what we already communicated tonight, and I think what you're gonna continue to communicate on a, on a face to face basis, so, uh, I, I don't know that, you know, if we work on a resolution, we're gonna wind up spending time wordsmithing a resolution, and probably another hour of, well, intentioned time talking about it. I'm not sure that's worth as much time as each of you going out and talking for other people and, you know, continuing to spread them that way.
Okay, then I, I, I appreciate that advice, I think that's good. The only thing I would ask is, uh, I didn't record, although we are being recorded, I, I, I love some of the, of the talking points that were stated tonight, and so if we get those talking points somehow to the, to the rest of the board and available to the community, we can start our campaign that way, and I think it'd be very, very effective. So, if you wanted to, yeah, I think that's a good way to operate, uh, we don't have to have a reservation.
And I, I just mentioned that our, our principals and our building administrators have asked for the same thing, because I think they're getting asked questions a lot as well at school activities and, you know, times where they're interacting with the community. So we've done, committed the same thing for them, that we give them a set of talking points to help with that.
Is everybody, I'm, I'm going, yeah, and then, um, so the three things that you wanted to get out of this discussion, Dr. Schuler, is a question about what's in SB 16, I think we got that, uh, what the board wants to do, that was the third thing, I got that, and I, I was trying to, like, really fast to get down the second thing.
The second, second thing just had to do with communication, and I think we talked about that, so we're good.
All right, so if everybody is, um, ready to ramp this up, I think we can move on. Okay, hearing no objections, and seeing lots of heads nod, we'll move on to the written reports. Uh, there were two written reports tonight, the Mayans' reports and five FOIA requests. Are there any questions out of any of the written reports? I just have one question on the FOIA request. Um, how much did we spend to respond to this one? Do you know? It seems like we're getting a lot of FOIA requests that are asking for, you know, what we might consider frivolous things, I mean, I don't know, just things, and, and some I think are, you know, legitimate, and, 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 and obviously, we try to fulfill as much as we can, but I think it might be a good, uh, uh, if we could keep track of it in some way, shape, or form, so that, so that we know what, what that's costing us. I don't know if other board members would be interested in that, at all, especially if it's insignificant, I think. It's like Rosemary said earlier, you know, dollar for dollar here, pretty soon we're talking about money, and I think it's an hour here, an hour there, on our, our staff time.
We have a choice in the, in the, in the, I was, I had a thought about the idea of FOIA, just to, you know, respond to your questions. I also thought that we get only provide information that was readily available.
You, you have to provide a record if a record is available.
Sometimes the, the request comes in wanting emails, you know, I want to see every email that was sent on this topic from this person, you know, to and from this person, and then somebody has to go through and redact information that might be confidential. I mean, it, it's not, it's not quite a, to, you know, our FOIA officer runs to the copy machine and makes 10 copies and it's done. That's not necessarily what happens with every FOIA request, so.
We have a choice, though, I mean, and I guess that's a valid idea, but, I mean, I know it costs us money and so on, but that's, you know, that's part of the whole concept of that act, is my understanding of it. You know, I don't know what, what we can say, or, let's say, the track, I mean, we're just wasting more time on the track, but, you know, the, the point is, you must do what you must do, so.
Yeah, I, I see that, but I, you know, I just thought, if it's, if it's not too big an issue, or if the board doesn't want to do it, that's okay, I, I just am curious, because I know it's, it's ramped up quite a bit.
I think that we should just take the file paper and call FOIA stack up high, and show, show how much time we have to put in to...
show, show how much time we have to put in to create these reports. I've seen that done before. Might be easier than just tracking the dollars, just pile about this.
I'd like to have Kathy and Keith or Louis.
All right, what, Ed, you, what are you giving? Okay, are there any, any other questions, and, and reports from the board? Or, any reports that are assigned committees? Sorry, I didn't, I might have, go into assigned committees after we set our goals. In the meantime, if there are committee activities that you need to do, um, you know, consider yourself still on the same committee you were on last year until we make the new assignments. Okay, I mean, I, they just dawned on me the other day when I was thinking about that, because I think we need to probably cast some meetings of some kind, whether it be on the teaching ability, I think there's some issues coming up maybe, and probably that there's always finance issues coming up. Um, I, I would say until we set new committees, just consider yourself to still be appointed to the committee you were on last year, and then we'll rearrange that once we do that all. Are there any other reports from board members? We have several topics for future discussion, the levy engaged 200, district goals, and our audit report. Um, for our district goals, let me just remind you that our next meeting will start formulating goals for the coming year. Um, you know, Dr. Schuler has been really busy working with staff to come up with some, um, parameters for those goals, and some broad categories and areas for us to have to discuss. Um, be sure before the next meeting, when we talk about goals, that you take a look again at our mission vision and belief statements, so that you can affirm those, reaffirm those as part of our goal setting process. Anything else I need to remind people of before we go into goal setting?
I just wanted, I just wanted to tell my colleagues that I will not be here for the goal setting session, which I'm very sorry about, I'll send in my comments to Dr. Schuler, and you can look at any of this, however, as he's fit, and, but that will mean you'll have shorter meetings, so.
I was gonna say, should we fly?
Okay, um, I think, um, we have some announcements. All right, we have some announcements, we have our committee in the hole, in which we're gonna have this goal setting discussion on October 22nd, 2014, at the School Service Center. We also have chat with the board on October 28th, 2014, from 8:00 AM to 9:30 AM, at Wheaton North High School. And our next regular meeting is November 12th, 2014, at 7:30 PM at Sandberg Elementary School. And I also should point out, uh, in between now and then, on October 17th and 18th, just remind you, that is the 15th anniversary of Wheaton North. So, uh, it'd be nice to take advantage of, uh, it'd be nice to participate in some of the events, and take advantage of celebrations, and using time to have some, your positive, positive relationships with our school, on our flagship high schools. So, um, public comments on board agenda items, there are no, no, nobody signed up to make public comments on agenda items, and we have no need for a closed session tonight. So unless there's further business to come before us, I'll ask for a motion and a second to adjourn.
Can we move to the, uh?
I'll second.
Moved by Mr. Madison, seconded by Mr. Giannini, on paper. Aye, closed. Let's do it.